Good afternoon. I will call to order our September 9, 2025, City Council meeting. I am your Mayor Brendan Kelfus. Leading us tonight in our invocation will be our Mr. City Manager Aaron Adams, followed by a flag salute. So if everyone can please stand. Would you please bow your head with me? Dear me Father, Lord, we give you thanks for this day. We give you thanks for the home that we call the City of Temecula, both as employers, as employees, as residents, as businesses. Lord, we believe we are a blessed city on so many fronts. Lord, but we pray for our community. We know there's folks hurting. We know they're suffering and, Lord, we pray for healing and help and resources and assistance where possible. But we also ask for protection for first responders or police and fire personnel, day to day, putting their lives on the line. Lord, we just ask for your protection of them. Lord, I pray for all city employees that are serving the greater good, that are serving this community. They do amazing work, day in, day out. And, Lord, lastly, but not least, I pray for the City Council for wisdom, discernment for this evening's agenda, those that are coming behind it. Lord, just help them to navigate and make good decisions accordingly. And, Lord, we give you all glory and honor in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you for that. If everyone can please face the flag, place your right hand over your heart, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Alexander.
Here.
Mayor Kelfus.
Here.
Councilmember Ron.
Here.
Councilmember Schwenk.
I'm here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here. All right, we will start tonight's meeting off with the presentation. And we will be doing a certificate of recognition for the Marine Corps Color Guard Team for First DSB Sergeant Eric Johnson, Jr., Sergeant Denzel Thomas, Sergeant Dylan White, Lieutenant Corporal Miguel Medina, and Lieutenant Corporal Bayron Gonzalez. Madam Mayor Pro Tem, since you are a Marine veteran, would you like to go down and hand out the certificates for them?
And while Mayor Pro Tem is walking down, we'll go ahead and read the certificate. The City of Temecula proudly recognizes your participation.
Why don't you gentlemen come up?
Yes. The City of Temecula proudly recognizes your participation in the 2025 Fourth of July Parade as a representative of our nation's military. Your presence in uniform was a powerful reminder of the courage, sacrifice, and dedication of our service members. The City of Temecula extends our sincerest gratitude for your meaningful participation, and we all thank you for your service to our nation. Thank you.
Well, first off, I'd just like to say you guys drove all the way up here, and I'm just very grateful. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your service, every single day, serving our country. And then you went above and beyond and came here and serviced and gave us an amazing, just standout color guard. It was just incredible, and it meant so much to our city. And so I just want to say thank you. Thank you for all of your dedication. We're really hoping that you're going to come back again to the city and be able to do this again, and hopefully we can get even more of the Marines behind you guys as we're doing the color guard. So again, thank you guys, and I just pray that you guys stay safe in your endeavors as you're moving forward. So with that, Lance Corporal, let me see, Mediana Ocha, Miguel. All righty. All righty, Lance Corporal Gonzalez Byron. Thank you, sir. All right, Sergeant Thomas. Denz- how do I say that? Denzel. There you go, sir. Thank you. Great job. And last one, Sergeant White Dylan. I appreciate you guys very much. Keep up the great work. Somebody want to say something? I think we were going to talk about it.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We just want to say, on behalf of the First Distribution Support Color Guard Team, thank you for having us out here, and we would definitely love the opportunity to come out here next year and do the same. And that's about it. We're all Marine Corps.
We're all, gentlemen, separate five. Does council want to come down?
Yeah, we'll come down.
Like we like each other? I was going to stick the mayor right there.
Thank you, guys, again.
We have our Community Services Commission. Ms. Hawks, hello.
Good afternoon, Mayor Kelfus and council members. My name is Dr. Yuan Hawks. I am the Chairwoman of this commission. It's my honor to serve alongside four exceptional commissioners. Next slide. Commissioner Ernie Castro, LaSalle DeGrave, Jeff Kingsburg, and Cassie Sizemore. Our last meeting was held less than 24 hours ago, 21 hours to be exact. Next, please. First, in Human Services, we had over 1,000 participants in August, driven largely by the Summer Food Service Program, with 700 meals served. Our back-to-school event offered free school supplies to 275 children. A special thank you to those who have donated. The supplies, almost half was from the Aquatic Team. I also want to thank Mayor Pro Tem Alexander, Councilmember Schwenk, and your son, and Mayor Kelfus, and your family for your support. Next, please. Senior Services saw nearly 700 participants, with over 400 making use of the Cool Center, a vital resource for hot summer days. It's noteworthy that our seniors had serious green thumbs, that they enjoyed a bountiful harvest. Next, they're venturing into composting. The Senior Center will be celebrating its 32nd birthday this Thursday. Next, please. Lastly, to recap, the highlights from last night was that we welcomed the Aquatics Volunteers and their families in this very chamber. It was remarkable that these volunteers were teenagers. Instead of playing video games, they put in a total of 1,600 hours. Their dedication and hard work made our summer swim program a huge success. In Director Russo's report, we were reminded that September is packed with events, from the College Fair to the Health Fair. For example, just this week, we have a full lineup, a mural unveiling recognizing the first responders on Wednesday, the 9/11 Remembrance on Thursday, the Plain Air Award Ceremony on Friday, and both the Culture Days at the Museum and the Cartuna Palooza on Saturday. We invite the community to come out and enjoy all that our city has to offer. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will move on to our Public Safety Report. Lieutenant Vic Pearson, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Team, City Residents, good afternoon. Next slide, please. So this month, this past month, in August, we handled 5,322 calls for service. As you can see, from July to August, the difference in the response time for the calls, we came down slightly for priorities ones and twos. Next slide, please. So just breaking it down by priority, the number of calls, we had 74 Priority Ones, 1,911 Priority Twos, 1,994 Priority Threes, and 1,282 Priority Fours, and then Party Nines. We had 61 of those. Those are usually calls for service where we self-generate or make a patrol file, just so that our deputies in the area know what is going on in a certain part of the city. Next slide, please. The Priority One Call breakdown, 20 juvenile medical aides, 12 robbery silent alarms, 10 AODs, seven traffic incidents, six attempted suicides, three burglaries, three suspicious circumstances, three aggravated assaults, two 5150s, two robberies, two missing children, and then a public assist, warrant service DUI, and narcotics, what were Party Ones this month. Next slide, please. And at this time, I'd like to call Sergeant Bill Pratt down to speak to council about
Welcome, Sergeant.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the council. It's a, well, I'll call it an opportunity to be here today. I was voluntiled to be here, so here I am. I thrive better in the background, so. But if we can move the slide forward, one to the, what this shows is a couple bar graphs showing the traffic statistics over the last two years. Unfortunately, this year is only 2/3 of the year, so some of the trends may be misleading when you first look at it. Two trends I would like to point out is that our fatal collisions are on track to be much lower this year, less than half so far this year, with only 1/3 of the year going. We're hoping that trend continues. And also, our total collisions are lower than they were last year at this time. One thing to note is the traffic citations are on track to be about 1/3 higher than last year's citations, which is one of the wonderful opportunities we have, being in traffic enforcement, is there is a direct correlation between what we do on the street and the safety that the public feels, which is really what our goal is. I just want to keep my presentation short and open it up to any questions you might have regarding the Traffic Division.
Councilmember Stewart?
I do have a question about the last bar graph. It says miscellaneous traffic. What does that mean?
Miscellaneous traffic, that is literally everything that falls under the traffic umbrella in our statistics system. So that is total, that will include everything you see before it, and that is not limited to just written events. That would also include, when somebody calls about a collision and they end up exchanging info, that would also be included there, where it wouldn't be necessarily under the total collisions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for all you do, Sergeant.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And that's all we have for our Public Safety Report.
All right, thank you very much, Lieutenant. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? All right, we will move on to our public comments on non-agenda items. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have four public comments on non-agendized items. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. The balance of the rules are printed in the agenda. The first speaker is Javier Enriquez, to be followed by Susan Whittier.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, Council staff. My name is Javier Enriquez. I'm the Senior Public Affairs Specialist for South Coast Air Quality Management District. On behalf of South Coast AQMD, I have an announcement to make. South Coast AQMD is excited to share that more than $417 million is now available through the Invest Clean Program, which provides four funding opportunities. First is Charging Infrastructure Program. Offsets the cost of DC fast chargers for Class IV through Class VIII vehicles. Eligible applicants include charging station developers, operators, and fleet operators, to include truck stop operators and distribution centers. The second, Truck Replacement Program. It is a scrap and replace program to transition Class VIII diesel goods, movement trucks with battery-electric alternatives. Examples of Class VIII trucks are heavy haulers, box trucks, dump trucks, and refuse trucks. Third, Battery-Electric Cargo Handling Equipment Program. It is a scrap and replace program to replace diesel yard trucks or top handlers with battery-electric alternatives. Fleet owners of cargo handling equipment at warehouses and freight facility centers are eligible for this program. The fourth is Battery-Electric Switcher Locomotive Program. It is a scrap and replace program to replace diesel-fueled switcher locomotives with battery-electric alternatives. Charging Infrastructure is also eligible for funding to support the battery-electric switcher locomotives. For full details, application deadlines, and how to apply or to apply, visit the Invest Clean webpage at AQMD.gov/InvestClean. Deadline to submit online application is 12:00 PM on November 28, 2025. I will also provide this information to the City Clerk and the link for further details. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
The next speaker is Susan Whittier, to be followed by Adam Eventoff.
And I told you I'd be back, and I usually bring roses, but today, and who knew, seniors love composting so much. This is the symbol of composting. I really want to honor someone that is an employee of the City of Temecula, and that is Stacy Brown. Three years ago, I submitted my first grant on behalf of the Temecula Valley Rose Society to the city. Stacy was the person to call if you had a problem, and I was having lots of problems. Over 10 weeks or so, she helped me and never got aggravated, made sure I got that in on time, and it was the right way. So I want to thank her because she was absolutely my touchstone. But she did something more. She came out and said, "Tell me about the garden and what you all do." And I explained about, as I have to you, that this garden is supported by volunteers. Every single thing that is done there to maintain the garden is done by volunteers. And we're all getting older, and it's a lot harder to stoop and get up again some days. At any rate, she said, "Well, I have an organization that does support nonprofit organizations, and that is the National Charity League. Do you know who they are?" And I said, "No, I don't know anything about them." Well, I made contact with them at her advice, and they are a mother-daughter organization, philanthropic, that adopts nonprofits like ours and then volunteers to help in whatever ways that organization might have a need. Over that two-and-a-half years now, we've had 60 moms and daughters come to the garden on Saturdays during our busy times of pruning, mulching, fertilizing, and weeding, and helped us. And it's wonderful to see people can bend down and get up without any assistance, trust me. So without Stacy, that wouldn't have ever happened, because I had no idea who the National Charity League was. Every August, the National Charity League sponsors their new season, where they welcome the new moms and daughters coming in. It's a six-year commitment of these moms and daughters to give to this organization, and then honor the girls who are leaving and what contribution they have made. So we introduced the composting program, because we do composting, as does the Senior Citizens Center, but it's a very important effort, because it is feeding the earth, and it's teaching young people and middle-aged and older people how important it is that those scraps that we would just throw into the garbage, what good they can provide to places like ours. I was able to, we have 40 homes who signed up. I was able to distribute 26 buckets. I still need 15 more, so I'm hoping the city can help me get those 15 more, so that we can have a robust program, and even extend it beyond in collaboration with other organizations. This city is truly a city of collaboration. I have only been here for four years, but it is amazing how much the city will go out of its way to help organizations throughout the city like ours. And I want to thank you all for your continued support.
Thank you very much, Ms. Whittier.
Oh, and I okayed it with the police officer to bring it in.
Thank you.
No food or drink, but the bucket's fine.
Thank you. Adam Eventoff, to be followed by our last speaker, Upne Daliwal.
Welcome, Mr. Eventoff.
All right, Honorable Mayor, City Council and Staff, Adam Eventoff, Senior Public Affairs with SoCal Gas. Just with a quick SoCal Gas minute to remind folks that if you know anybody who might need some assistance with their bill, have a medical condition, or just need a little help, they can always visit SoCalGas.com/assistance, or if they prefer to talk to somebody, 1-800-427-2200. If you're a SoCal Gas customer, that's a phone number that everybody should have in their phone, whether they need to start service, end service, or get some help, or even just check out and make sure that they don't have a leak, 1-800-427-2200. I thank you. You guys have a great afternoon.
Thank you very much, Mr. Eventoff. Madam City Clerk, next speaker, please.
Yes, our last speaker is Upne Daliwal.
Welcome, Upne.
Can I, hi. Can I get some assistance for images?
Absolutely. We will have someone come down right now. In the meantime, if you want to lift that little, the arm up. If you go all the way up, yeah, right there. He's coming on his way right here, so he'll be able to help you out.
I think it's good. Good afternoon. My name is Upne Daliwal, and I am a parent at TVUSD and a resident of the Paloma del Sol neighborhood. I wish my first visit to the City Council chambers, beautiful City Council chambers, was under better circumstances, but sometimes unpleasant business also has to be dealt with. I'm here tonight to address the troubling behavior of Councilwoman Jessica Alexander. Last week, about 20 students and 20 adults gathered outside Day Middle School, but most of these adults weren't from Temecula. They came from San Diego, Oceanside, and beyond, including a traveling agitator known for disrupting meetings across California. And Councilwoman Alexander was right there, shaking hands with them and welcoming them into our community. These outsiders have latched on to our district because of one transgender student, and instead of protecting our kids, Councilwoman Alexander chose to stand with these outside agitators. She drove across town during morning drop-off, not to discuss policy, but to target the very existence of a single child. When a veteran teacher with 30 years of experience asked her why she was endangering a student, Councilwoman Alexander engaged in a staring contest, then said that "Don't throw pearls before swine," and told the teacher to stop acting like a pig. She then deliberately misgendered the student, making it clear her purpose wasn't policy, but harassment. To escalate matters further, she posted an edited video attacking the teacher on her official Mayor Pro Tem social media account sourced from an agitator in Florida. The Councilwoman has every right to her personal beliefs and how she chooses to spend her time as a private citizen. It's not my primary concern, though I strongly disagree with adults endangering students at our schools. But using her public office to amplify this rhetoric and encouraging outsiders to come here and bully children is absolutely inappropriate for an elected official. And since she claims to be so concerned about protecting children, let's talk about actual safety. Just yesterday, two girls were hit by a motorcycle outside Grade Oak High School in a crosswalk. Road safety is city business. During summer school pickup, I witnessed a student on his bike get thrown into the air at the exit of Chaparral on Winchester Road, even while riding in the bike lane. Rather than targeting the students and teachers who live in this community and chasing culture war battles, perhaps focus on the real work of city government, repairing roads, improving crosswalks, adding protected bike lanes, and ensuring safe infrastructure for our community. Temecula deserves leaders who protect our kids, not leaders who invite chaos into our schools and into our city. In a few months, when council votes on who will serve as mayor, I urge you to remember, Jessica Alexander has shown again and again that she is unfit for that role. Do not elevate her to a position that demands integrity, judgment, and the ability to represent all residents of Temecula. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comments on non-agendized items for tonight.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. We will move on to our City Council reports. Which one of my colleagues would like to go first? Councilmember Stewart, got anything for us tonight?
I think so.
All right.
I think I have a slide. All right, so this is the 17th Annual Temecula Valley College and Vocational Fair. It happens at the Promenade Mall, and from what I know, it's the second most visited time of the mall is for this fair. So it's like Black Friday at the mall. So it's from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and I'm very excited that the vocational factor is being utilized in this venue also, because not every kid's going to go to college. So it's great that we have vocational opportunities for these kids to look into and explore. So this, September 20, yes, that's it.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Stewart. Councilmember Ron, anything for us tonight? Councilmember Schwenk?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I've got a slide and then a quick video, so if we could throw up the slide. We've received several calls and emails in about Dial-A-Ride in the City of Temecula and how that works. And so I reached out to Kristin Worsinski, the CEO of RTA, and worked with their planning staff to bring down a presentation. So we're going to host a Dial-A-Ride presentation for seniors at the Mary Phillips Senior Center and in partnership with RTA. And so what this will do is essentially, you'll be able to learn how to use Dial-A-Ride and what lifeline extensions are, and it's a pretty complex system, unfortunately. We're trying to make it a little bit easier for our seniors and for folks that need that extra assistance with transportation. So Monday, September 15, from 10:00 to 11:00 in the morning at Mary Phillips Senior Center. I hope to see anyone there. And if we could just roll the quick video, please?
Hey, what's up, Temecula? I am out today with our Homeless Outreach Team and our debris removal crew here, and I'm kind of behind, like, BJ's and bean coffee roasters. We're walking up to kind of like the Costco area, so there's a couple tunnels that go under Inez, and then there's a couple tunnels that go under Overland, and we're cleaning them up. It's a part of what we do here with our Homeless Outreach, and I wanted to highlight it. So follow along. I'm going to make a few more videos of everything we're doing out here today. See you in a bit.
All right, so I've been doing some different series of videos on my social media, and I did a trail series. We did like an Old Town Parking series, and I've spent the last few days with our Homeless Outreach and Prevention Team on debris removal and cleanup. So I just wanted to highlight that, because this is kind of like the unseen side of Homeless Outreach, that I want the public to know exactly what we are doing and how it works. So you can follow along on my councilmembers' social media. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. I am super excited to bring this to the council. The fact of the matter is, is we have something really huge that myself and Councilmember Zach Schwenk have been working on for our military. And so one of the things that I had come up with and have been working tightly with staff and Councilmember Schwenk is we would like to be able to do something for our veterans. We have obviously Veterans Month coming up here in the next couple weeks. In November, it's going to come sooner than later, but we have all these members of the military that are out serving our country and protecting not only our city, but our country. And so what we're doing is we're partnering with MilVet to create an ability for the community to have drop-off boxes in different areas inside of different businesses, and we're also hoping that schools pick this up as well, and that everybody will bring in different types of either hygiene gear or snacks or different things that can be boxed up eventually and sent over to our active-duty military individuals. And what's really neat is we're going to do a big packaging day at the end of this. I believe it's on the 16th, if I'm correct on that one, so November 16. So I just want to just let everybody know, our City of Temecula and also, obviously, our City Council members, that this is going to go on. We're hoping to have all different boxes. I know myself and Schwenk are going to be at some different locations, and I'm hoping maybe you guys will pick some locations, too, to just encourage people to come out and drop off, whether you're at Ralph's, or Stater Brothers, or any of these other places, to drop off goods. And just to let people know, I guess Marietta wanted to create a little bit of a competition. So we are, I asked Marietta to be in this just as a sister city, so we can even make this bigger. And Lori Stone wanted to up the dibs a little bit and says, "Well, what does a loser have to do?" So I'll just let you guys know that myself and Schwenk have volunteered, if we lose, which won't happen, we have to clean their parks for two hours with shirts that says "I love Temecula" or "I love Marietta" on it. So we cannot lose. So I'm just encouraging our cities, our businesses, everybody to jump out and just take part of this. Let's do something bigger than just what's for here. Let's really protect our men and women overseas in letting them know that we're thinking about them and that we're going to continue to support them as they're supporting and serving us. So go ahead and to the website, if you're a business, if you're a nonprofit, whatever, and we'd love for you to jump in and find out more about it. So that's what I have for that. And I would just like to, I was debating on this for a minute, whether or not I was just going to do a quick, just comment on what had happened. And I just, if people haven't already seen the reel that's gone on, it's gone viral nationwide. And I just want to say, as your City Councilwoman, I pose myself professionally as a mom of five daughters and as a Temecula resident. five daughters and as a Temecula resident. I never went there posing as your city councilwoman. I went there for my daughters and my son, and I had those mothers specifically call me and ask me to go to that meeting, or to the corner over there. So I sat there, I wanted to watch, I wanted to observe, and I will tell you, I felt harassed for after five to almost ten minutes, being chased down by a resident with a camera in my face the entire time. You will see it, she was holding it. So again, I tried to compose myself, be professional, but there sometimes comes a point to where enough is enough. Stop harassing people, stop putting cameras in people's faces, and let's just have real conversations rather than what's posing on right now. So I just want to just thank everybody for your support for everything, and thank you very much for bringing that forward, I appreciate it, but I wanted also to get my side of the story out. So thank you.
All right, I just have one slide up here tonight. As you know, I've been doing the Create the Mayor's Tie, where kids come to my office and get to color a little tie. This right here is little Miss Lila, so I am wearing Lila's tie tonight, which is pretty awesome. She made a whole design about Temecula, and she even put the original date, which is, what, 1852 that we were established?
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine?
Yes.
See, it's all blurry, so fifty-nine, there you go. Eighteen fifty-nine, long before our time, but pretty awesome. So keep looking out for those Create the Mayor's Tie that I wear every week. A new kiddo comes to the office and colors the tie, and I put it on for the council meeting. We will move on now to our consent calendar. Item number one, waive reading of title and text of all ordinances and resolutions included in the agenda. Item number two, approve action minutes of August 26, 2025, and September 2, 2025. Item number three, approve list of demands. Item number four, approve city treasurer's report for the period of June 1, 2025 through June 30, 2025. Item number five, award construction contract to First Trade LLC, DBA, YMC for Fire Station 84 renovation, PW 19-14. Item number six, approve First Amendment to Agreement with South Star Engineering and Consulting, Inc. for consultant services for the I-15 Congestion Relief Project, PW 19-02. Item number seven, approve Second Amendment to Agreement with CHA Consulting, Inc., formerly Falcon Engineering Services, Inc. for consultant services for the I-15 French Valley Parkway Improvements Phase 2, PW 16-01. Item number eight, approve Second Amendment to Agreement with BioTox Laboratories for Toxicology and Lab Services. Item number nine, approve Eighth Amendment to Agreement with David Evans and Associates, Inc. for the Diaz Road Expansion Project, PW 17-25. Item number 10, approve specifications and authorize solicitation of construction bids for citywide Slurse Seal Program, PW 25-06. At this time, my colleagues can pull any items they want and/or, well, entertain a motion and a second.
Move approval.
Second. That has been moved and seconded. Let us vote. And our consent calendar passes unanimously, five to zero. We will now recess the city council meeting to our Temecula Community Services District.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'll now call the Temecula Community Services District meeting to order. Madam Secretary, please note that we are all still here. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move to our consent calendar. We have two items. Item 11, approve action minutes of August 26, 2025. Item 12, approve sponsorship agreement with Senior Golden Years of Temecula Valley, Inc. for support in support of senior services activities. I'll entertain a motion and a second.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let us please vote. All right, that passes five to zero. Thank you, everyone. Director of Community Services, do we have a report today?
Yes, just a few events we'd like to bring to the community's attention. This Thursday, we will be holding our annual September 11th remembrance. We invite the entire community to come out and join us at 6:00 PM at the Duck Pond. For more information, you can go to our website or give us a call at 951-694-6480. Next slide, please. And then we have several cultural arts events coming up. On Friday, September 12th, we have a reception for the Eighteenth Annual Ralph Love Plainair Artist Reception and Art Show at the museum, right down at the end of the street, next to Sam Hicks Park. I highly recommend you come on out for this. It's a great opportunity to celebrate not just our local artists, but also the beautiful artwork that they produce by painting in real-time outdoors, many of the most iconic sites we have here in town. And this year, we added the Rose Garden to the list of sites where they could paint, and it was absolutely stunning. Then on Saturday, September 13th, we will be celebrating the Culture of Armenia from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, also at Sam Hicks Monument Park in front of the museum. And finally, a little bit on Saturday morning, also the 13th, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, we'll be holding our annual Cartoonapalooza event. In past years, that's been here at City Hall and the Conference Center. This year, it's going to be over at the Ronald J. Parks Community Recreation Center on Rancho Vista. And that concludes my report.
Great, thank you very much, Director Russo. General Manager, anything?
Nothing further this afternoon.
Thank you, sir. Directors, anything? All right, seeing nothing, we'll adjourn this meeting to our next meeting, September 23rd, 2025.
All right, we will move on. We have no meeting for the successor agency, the Temecula Redevelopment Agency. We have no meeting for the Temecula Housing Authority, and we'll call to order the Temecula Public Financing Authority Meeting. Madam City Clerk, please note that we are all still here. Do we have any public comments? We'll move on to our TPFA Consent Calendar. Item number 13, approved and adopt resolutions of intention to form CFD #25-01, Elderberry Park. Authorize the levy of special taxes on property in CFD #25-01 and incur bonded indebtedness for CFD #25-01, and approve related documents and agreements. I'll entertain a motion and a second.
Second.
That has been moved and seconded. And our TPFA Consent Calendar passes unanimously, five to zero. Do we have an executive director report?
Nothing further.
Seeing none. Board of Director reports? All right, with that, I will adjourn our TPFA meeting, and I will reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting, and we will move on to business item number 14. Introduce ordinance and adopt resolution related to the upcoming recruitment of members for the Planning Commission. Madam City Clerk, can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this will be a brief staff report that will go over some of the main things that we visited and that you all provided direction on from April 2025. We are going to be going out for our Planning Commission recruitment shortly, so we wanted to make sure all of this was solidified via ordinance and resolution. So as the council will recall, in April 2025, the city council provided direction for future Planning Commission appointments and terms. While the council did not make any changes to the subject matter jurisdiction or the number of members, there were changes to other items. For example, the council stated that they wanted all existing terms of the commissioners to go ahead and end on December 31, 2025. At that point, there would be an appointment process for new commissioners. Existing sunsetting commissioners would have the ability to go ahead and reapply. Any future appointments would be made at the nomination of each individual council member. What that means is that each council member would go ahead at the appropriate time and at a public meeting, share who they would like to go ahead and nominate. At the end, the full city council would vote on that slate of individually nominated members. The applications will be included in the agenda packet only, there will be no public interviews. The Planning Commission meeting time and frequency is aligned with OTLAC. OTLAC, our Old Town Local Advisory Committee, currently meets at 10:00 AM once a month. The Planning Commission would also meet at 10:00 AM once a month, reserving the right to go ahead and hold additional meetings as necessary. The recruitment period would run for thirty days. For example, we're trying to close out GPAC right now, so GPAC would close out on September 15th. And then after that, we would go ahead and open up the recruitment for Planning Commission pretty quickly after that. Council would make any appointments at the November 2025 meeting, which as of right now is going to be scheduled November 18th. There will only be one meeting in November. And then the terms of the newly appointed individuals would begin January 1, 2026, and run concurrent with the term of the nominating council member. So most of the time, the nominating council member's term is four years, so the planning commissioner's term would also be four years. In the event that that particular individual's term is shortened, then that term would be shortened as well. The term runs with the member, the nominating council member themselves. So that, Mr. Mayor, unless you have any questions, is the staff report. Happy to answer any questions and/or take any other direction. This particular item, we would need to introduce the ordinance and adopt the resolution. We would like to do this prior to the actual recruitment, so that we can go ahead and list this information on the recruitment as well. So I want to make sure council is clear on the points that we just reviewed, and if there's any questions, happy to clarify further.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. Do any of my colleagues have any clarifying questions? Mayor Pro Tem?
Mayor, I do have one quick question. One of my questions is, let's see, it is going to be on the ordinance, let me see, over at 2.40, .50, or point, I can't even talk to you, .050, where it says, "Each council member shall nominate one member of the commission. Each such nomination shall require confirmation by majority of the entire council." So maybe you had said this, and I apologize if I just didn't pick up on it. So what we're stating is, we'll each pick an individual, but then as a collective, we will still have the ability to take that out, like?
So, so, so the way this works is that every single individual will go ahead and nominate a member of their choice.
Right.
Once the slate is fully nominated, council will then go ahead and approve by majority vote the slate itself.
Okay.
So that is, now, I recognize that, that we, this is also how we did it prior with respect to subcommittee recommendations.
Sure.
The subcommittee would go ahead and nominate candidates, and then the council would go ahead and appoint. This is from a municipal operations perspective. In order to effectuate the appointment the way it's set up, we need a majority of the council to take action.
Is it just me, or is there maybe a way, just for future councils, so that way, nothing ever gets lost, that we can just indicate a little bit clearer that we are voting as for everybody for the individual nominee's vote? Does that make sense?
Yes, yes, so I'm happy to go ahead and work with the city attorney to administratively adjust that particular section to make it clear that the council is ratifying the full slate of nominated individuals.
Amazing.
Mr. City Attorney, is that something that we can correct administratively? Okay, wonderful.
Amazing. Thank you very much, staff.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you very much. The way I think about it is, it's direct council member recommendation, right? Originally, I thought of direct council appointment, but direct council recommendation is a good way to verbalize it. Councilmember Ron?
Just one interesting point came up earlier today in some conversation. The independence of the Planning Commission, I want to make sure that we have some language in there or something that recognizes that even though an individual council member may be appointing that member, the member of the Planning Commission is an independent entity, not to be directed by or led by the council member. Because it's just a perception issue, I think it's an important one, too, if we're doing the, you know, direct nomination, just to recognize that, that doesn't get lost in future councils.
Sure, we can go ahead, working with the city attorney, in the resolution itself, which establishes the reintroduced Planning Commission, we can go ahead in the section that talks about their statutory roles and responsibilities, we can add a sentence that says that the individual commissioner is acting as an independent pursuant to the statutory responsibilities, or something like that, as if that was your intent.
Yep.
Okay, great. Mr. City Attorney, could that be done administratively as well? Okay?
Councilmember Stewart?
So I do want to clarify, too, that in this particular instance, it doesn't have to be a Temecula resident, is that correct?
It does.
No, actually, it does have to be a Temecula.
Oh, it does?
Yes.
The GPAC. You're thinking the GPAC.
What's that? I think you were thinking of the GPAC.
GPAC?
GPAC, because we are looking for folks that are actually, live, work, play, more broader, own property, run a business, so on and so forth. That's the GPAC.
Okay.
For Planning Commission and any of our other commissions, they do have to be a resident of the city.
Got it, thank you.
All right, all good questions and clarifying points. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. If no further questions, we will move on to public comments. Do we have any public comments?
We do not, sir.
All righty, seeing no public comments, we can have discussion and/or a motion and a second.
I'll move the item.
Second. That has been moved and seconded. Let us vote. And item number 14 passes unanimously, five to zero. We will move on to item number 15, adopt resolution approving the corporate sponsorship program at the request of the Parks Recreation and Community Services Subcommittee, Councilmember Schwank and Stewart. Madam City Clerk, can we have a staff report, please? Will that be Mrs. Rousseau?
Yes, that will be me. Sorry, just want to get this up full screen. Okay, there we go. So first of all, just to set the stage, I just wanted to remind everybody that we've actually had a corporate sponsorship policy in place since about 2013. So this isn't a new sponsorship policy, per se, but what we're doing is, we're revisiting the program, we're kind of bringing it up to speed for today, for our current needs, and to better match the community partners that we currently have. Next slide, please. Oh, actually, I think I'm, my apologies. So in order to update this, what we did was, we aligned it with the QLMP, and now that we've added that seventh core value, the equity core value, that is spelled out as well. It defines event tiers and sponsored benefit packages very clearly, so that any potential sponsor knows exactly what they would be getting if they partner with us on this program. It encourages public-private partnerships, which is something we've heard loud and clear that the council is very interested in us pursuing, and this gives us a great pathway forward to do that, as well as corporate investment within community services and any other city facility program or event. The original version of the corporate sponsorship policy required that 50% of all incoming or sponsored funds be diverted into the Community Services Fund. And just to clarify, although here we're talking about the Temecula Community Services Department and Community Services Programs, Events, Activities, that's different than the similarly named Community Services Fund, which is a separate fund that is allocated by council and administered by subcommittee. That fund is used to fund nonprofits who can apply. I believe we just were closing, I think on September 15th, the window for this next round of applications, which will then be reviewed, and the monies will be allocated by the CSF Subcommittee. So this is entirely separate, and this removes that requirement that 50% of the sponsorship funds go into the CSF. What we found was, that was a way of confusing for some of our sponsors. If they wanted to sponsor, let's say, a program at the senior center for $5,000, $2,500 of that would instead be diverted into the CSF, and then would be allocated by a subcommittee to perhaps a different nonprofit. So our sponsorship partners, it was a little bit of a disincentive for cash sponsorships. So this revised policy eliminates that requirement. The CSF fund will still continue to be funded, allocated by council, so it's not going to negatively impact that fund at all. The sponsorship guide outlines special event tiers, so what we did for this was, we took the events that we offer all year long, and we divided them into three tiers. The Tier One events tend to be smaller attendance and/or they have a more limited audience. So if you look at that, you'll see the Teen Easter Egg Hunt. The Teen Easter Egg Hunt's a lot of fun, but it has a very niche audience, it's a fairly small attendance event. The Tier Two events have higher attendance, and they have a local, not as limited, more of just a local or focused audience. For example, the Temecula Culture Fest, which we have out here every year in May, or the regular Easter Egg Hunts. The regular Easter Egg Hunts hugely attended, they apply to, or they attract families with kids of all ages. The Tier Three events have significant attendance, over 5,000, and in many cases here, if you look at the Tier Three events, in the tens of thousands in terms of attendance, and have a regional draw. So that way, when a partner is looking to sponsor an event, they can kind of choose which tier of event they'd like to sponsor for, and there's nothing limiting them from doing more than one. And then on this chart, we see the sponsorship benefits, and this lays out for each one of those event tiers, you can choose to sponsor the program at a different level depending on your budget. So for Tier One events, we have the basic bronze and silver categories. For the Tier Two events, we have bronze, silver, and gold. For Tier Three, which are really large signature events, we have silver, gold, and platinum. And then finally, at the bottom in orange, you'll see Event MVP, and that's really a way for us to allow, to customize a sponsorship package if we had a sponsor who wanted to sponsor multiple events, or a really large, make a really large investment in our programming. So the goal with laying the benefits and the events out like this is to really allow any potential partner to customize the level of investment they're looking to do, and it allows them to choose the option that best aligns with their own goals, and it provides a number of benefits that allow businesses ways to promote the services that they offer to the community participants who are coming to these events. Now, at this point, I'd just like to emphasize that this sort of corporate sponsorship policy is extremely common in municipal governments. Many of our neighboring agencies are using this to excellent effect, to help offset some of the increase in costs of providing extensive community services. some of the increase in costs of providing extensive community services. We feel this is an excellent way to create and incentivize public-private partnerships, and to really allow us to continue to fund community services at the level that our community has come to expect. So that concludes my report, and I am available for any questions at this time.
Thank you very much, Director Russo. Any questions from my colleagues? Just one. Councilmember Ron?
Just a quick one. So the historic way of doing this was 50% for nonprofits that were directed by the city, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Taking that away, I'd be curious, are we, because these are all public benefit donations, do the donors receive any sort of benefits from a tax perspective?
That's a great question, and I actually don't know the answer to that. So I haven't looked into whether they receive any tax benefits.
Peter? Is there a...
Sorry, just trying to turn on my mic.
Sorry.
Give you a lot of confidence. There are tax benefits for donations to 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporations. There's also tax benefits to public agencies for work with respect to their programs. That's a separate section of the Internal Revenue Code. Most people don't know about it, but it's there, and they'd have to check and see if this type of community service would count for that type of tax deduction.
Okay.
So the answer is probably, but they need to double-check it just to make sure.
Can we provide some language for potential donors and sponsors that alludes to that, or at least directs them to where they can get that information?
Yeah, I can provide the section to the Community Services Department.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't, I don't think we should say they are entitled to.
Right, I wouldn't say that, but yeah, but I would say, you know, can we at least direct them to, you know, figure it out for themselves? Because I think that's a fairly substantial benefit, especially from a corporate perspective or from a personal. And I just, I was a little worried that if we pulled out that 501(c), because I'd heard that there were, you know, some businesses that were only doing the 50% deduction because they knew we were giving 50% to a nonprofit, right? But we've never really formalized that, and I don't know if we'd need, you know, sort of letters recognizing, or however, but the structure behind this, I think, is a pretty substantial investment, especially if we're asking for sponsors to come upwards of $10,000. So if we can just kind of integrate that in there, that'd be great.
Any other questions from my colleagues? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, do we have any comments on the agenda item? All right, seeing none. We can have discussion and/or a second and a motion.
I'll move approval.
That has been moved and seconded. And item number 15 passes unanimously, five to zero. We will move on to our second area for public comments on non-agenda items. Madam City Clerk, did anyone sneak in while we were having the meeting? Seeing none, we will move on to our items for future city council agendas. May my colleagues have any...
Mayor, I do have one.
Oh, Mayor Pro Tem?
All righty, thank you very much, sir. All right, as you all know, Proposition 50 was recently passed on November 2025 ballot. Proposition 50 would allow California to temporarily use legislatively drawn congressional district maps for elections from 2026 to 2030. If passed, it would replace the current congressional maps drawn by the Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission with new lines. This is why I myself am opposed to Proposition 50. It is setting up a temporary system to allow the legislature to draw lines instead of the independent commission for reasons other than benefiting California directly. We have to think about what is best for our city, Temecula. The truth is, Temecula has benefited from many years of existing representation. Representatives such as Congressman Isa and Calvert have done an excellent job helping Temecula obtain federal funding for many major infrastructure projects, including the $50 million for the I-15 interchange, as well as the $2 million for Diaz Road Widening. And let's not forget our most recent $39 million for the Marietta Creek improvements, and many other infrastructure projects, improving our circulation and our traffic. We have intentionally and carefully built a great relationship with our existing representatives over the years. I always say, don't fix what's broke. The reality is, the measure doesn't serve our city, it threatens it. This is a perfect example where we should not let outside politics divide our community or jeopardize Temecula's future as a whole. As we sit on the dais, our responsibility is clear, to keep Temecula strong, united, and fully supported. For this reason, today, I am asking my colleagues for if you would like to join me in opposing Proposition 50 collectively as a council, and keep our boundaries drawn by independent commissions, and not to draw maps in the middle of a census. If not, I am hopeful that some of my colleagues will oppose the Proposition 50 in their independent capacities. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the fact that the measure is on the ballot means that the city council's ability to deal with opposition or support of that is very limited. One thing that you can do is adopt a resolution, either in support of or opposition. So really, the only thing before you tonight is whether you want to have another council meeting at which you consider a potential resolution to support or oppose it.
Yes.
So just to clarify, would the motion be Mayor Pro Tem to bring this back to a future meeting to either support or go against Proposition 50?
So Mayor, what it would be, it would just be up to oppose Proposition 50. That's just what I'm asking for, a resolution, pretty cut and clear, if we want to do that. Wonderful. If not, we just do it independently. But just because of the effects here in our city specifically, not looking at red and blue, but just straight down the middle, the effects that it can have, and that what the information I brought forward, I think, is just really important that we take a look at it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is that motion clear for you, Madam City Clerk? Any clarifying questions?
I just want to make sure we all understand, we're bringing back another item to discuss it. Yeah, that's it.
Councilmember Ron?
Just before we bring it back, first, thanks for bringing this up. Second, can we, before that next meeting where we have that discussion, get any information we can from, say, the league on if they've provided any analysis or thought, if they have a subcommittee dedicated to this? I'm not sure what's going on on their end.
Sure, sure. So as the city attorney stated, at the next council meeting, we will actually bring this back, and it will be considered a resolution to oppose, basically as council member indicated, Proposition 50 at the request of Councilmember Alexander. And as a part of that, we will have a staff report, the text of the measure, background analysis, anything we can find and support, and then we'll let you all discuss it and give us direction. If the council wishes to go ahead and support a resolution opposing, then we would go ahead and adopt that, and...
Well, but specifically, if the league has anything between now and then that...
Yes, the League of California Cities currently does not have a position on Proposition 50. It will not be having a board member, another board meeting until October, and I'm pretty confident that the League of California Cities takes ballot measure positions based on two-thirds of its membership, and so at this point, that does not exist.
And, okay, perfect. Thank you. And then the other question was on the city council policy guide. Did the council produce, I'm going to be a little bit out of the loop on this one, but did the council produce guidelines for proclamations and resolutions related to...
Yes, yes, sir, it did. However, this, because it is a ballot proposition that has already been placed on the ballot itself, it is not a resolution of principle, per se, of the city council.
Okay, just wanted to clarify, because that's important, I think, to make sure. Yeah, so, good, good. I'm glad to hear that. Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Randy, before they vote on this, can we also, between now and the next meeting, there's a lot of legal angling on this topic with chatter about this issue obviously escalating all the way to the Supreme Court prior to the voters going to the polls. Whatever legal, at the time we publish, can we also include that in the staff report for the benefit of the council in two weeks as well?
Yes, Mr. City Manager, we'll make sure that we have opposing and supporting arguments for the proposition as laid out, also as a part of the agenda packet.
And it's important to note, as well, next week, myself and some of the executive staff will be traveling to Washington, where we can meet with our federal lobbyists and our congressmen out there to see their position on it, and we can bring that back at the following meeting.
If I can just add, you know, this is something I've been sitting on for about two months. Like, this isn't just something I pulled out yesterday. When I first noticed it, I did a lot of background on it, and I wanted to make sure, again, what is best for our city. Not anything else, not California, not anywhere else, but I think when I was talking with staff, I think I said it best. It's like, everybody just needs to stay in their own sandpit and just play in your own sandboxes, and let's just keep moving with city business and what we need to get done. So, yeah, that's where I'm at, and so, yeah, thank you all for listening, though.
Thank you very much. There's been a motion?
There has not been a motion. I'll take a motion in a second, please.
Mayor Pro Tem, would you like to make the motion?
So I'd like to make a motion that at our next meeting, we have an opportunity to speak about opposing Proposition 50 collectively as a city council.
Second. That has been moved and seconded. Let us vote. And that motion passes unanimously, five to zero. Do any of my colleagues have any items for future city council agendas? All right, seeing none. City Manager report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just have one. We could throw the slide up there, super important. Deputy Jen, appreciate all you do for this campus, day in, day out, on the third floor, second floor, in the garage, all around. Tomorrow is her birthday. Happy birthday, Deputy Jen. So, thank you.
I think we should say happy birthday.
Happy 30th birthday out there. All right, City Attorney report?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Ron, one last comment here?
One last comment, just want to remind everybody that September 11th at the Duck Pond, we're holding our annual remembrance, so I hope to see everyone there. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. All right, everyone have a great night. We will adjourn this meeting. See you in two weeks.